Good afternoon, welcome. Today is Tuesday, May the 21st. I am Shebra Evans and I'm so happy to welcome everyone to the Communication and Stakeholder Engagement Committee meeting. Today, we have exciting topics and conversations that we want to be able to discuss with everyone. Our theme for this year has been centered around valuing the voices of our community. And today, we have our students, the most important people here at MCPS. We are here to ensure that our students are ready and able to be academically prepared, to have the creative solving skills that they need to be able to go on to college career and to serve in their community. And today, we want to hear from our students, how we are best serving them, or how we can do things a little bit differently. So we will be hearing from our students on a variety of topics. But first, I want to get started and just have my colleagues introduce themselves, and then we'll go around the table and have staff introduce themselves as well. I'll begin with Ms. Rivera Oven.
Good afternoon, Buenas tardes. My name is Grace Rivera Oven, and I represent District One.
Ms. Yang.
Good afternoon, everyone. Julie Yang, District Three. It's great to see everyone today.
Good afternoon, everybody. How are you all doing? It's good to see so many familiar faces and, you know, a lot of new people as well, which is always really exciting. My name is Sammy Said. I'm a student member of the board, so it's great to be surrounded by some of my peers here today and hear some critical student issues. So thank you guys so much for coming out, and I know the bravery it takes to sit on that side of the table 100%.
Absolutely. So we'll start with staff. Can you just state your name and your position for everyone?
Good afternoon. My name is Shannon Pattyput, Analyst to the Board.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kristy Scott. I'm Communications Coordinator for the Board.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mr. James Lipinski. I am the Communications Support Specialist at the Board.
All right. And so we'll have our students. I want you to, we'll start with the students that are on virtual. State your name, your grade, and what school. We will, so I will start. You know what? Let me say, Peter Boyko. You're on mute, I believe. We can't hear you. So you know what? Until we get it started, maybe it's your AirPods, I'm not sure.
Maybe you need to take your AirPods out, Peter.
Let's try that.
Take them out. Yeah, you go, bud. Good job. Let's try that again.
No, that still isn't it. So we'll let TV figure that out. Until then, we'll start with everyone that's right here in front of me. We'll start and go around.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Allen. I'm a junior at Bethesda Chevy Chase High School.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ella Wong, and I'm a seventh grader at Nielsville Middle School.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nikhil Rao, and I am an eighth grader at Eastern Middle School.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Yuna Soriano, and I am a freshman at Weyon High School.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carmon Siksena, and I'm an eighth grader at North Bethesda Middle School.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nico Drazio, and today was my last day as a senior at Weyon High School.
Oh, my goodness. Congratulations, Nico. Good seeing you. You've been doing some great stuff, and I'm excited to hear from all of you. Let's try to go back to our students on Zoom. Let's try it again. No, we still can't hear. Oh, okay. So we'll get that figured out. So I believe we have Peter Boyko, and you're from Northwest High School? Yes, awesome. Okay, yes. I don't know what grade you're in, but you can put numbers up if you want to. This could mean 11th. 11th, okay, all right.
10th grade.
10th, 10th, okay, okay. I have you advanced, okay. And then, online, let me see. Is Sophia online?
I didn't see Sophia.
No. Kari?
Gari Villanor.
Gari Villanor?
Hi.
Hi, okay, we can hear you. Okay, all right. So introduce yourself, introduce yourself. Say your name, grade, and school.
My name is Gaudi Villanor. I'm a junior at Northwest High School.
Okay, thank you. And then, can our next student, can you introduce yourself?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Catherine Alguerez, and I'm a senior at Albert Einstein High School.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. And so two of our students online will be observing. They're here just to listen. Guess what? But you can also just jump in and chime in if what you're hearing your classmates, your peers say, if it resonates with you, if you want to share, please feel free. Just raise your hand, use the reaction on the Zoom, and I'll call on you, okay? But otherwise, happy that you're here to listen and observe. So we'll go ahead and begin. I do think that it's important. Also, and I want to acknowledge, we have some students here in the audience that are observing as well. So thank you for being here. And I, let me say, Sophia? Yes, Sophia attends Springbrook High School, is that correct? Okay, what grade are you in? 10th grade. And then, we have, tell me your name again?
Tahira.
Tahira? And Tahira is at Robert Frost Middle School? Very good. What grade are you in, Tahira?
Eighth.
Eighth, all right. So glad to see everyone. We wanted to make sure that as we think about the programs and our policies that we're putting in place, that we actually hear from our students, hear your voices, so that you can share with us what's working well, what's not working well. I think this is a great opportunity for you all to be able to come forward as leaders, whether you have, you hold position in your schools or not, you are leaders in our eyes. And so we'll start off with, we're going to lead into Alexander. Alexander, go ahead and tell us what you would like for the Board to hear and know about your experience.
Yeah, so good afternoon, everyone. My name's Alexandra Allen. As I said earlier, I'm a junior at Bethesda Chevy Chase High School, and I'm here today to discuss school start times and their importance on students' academic performance, well-being, and safety. So we all know the problem, students just don't get enough sleep. So I surveyed 147 students across over 20 MCPS high schools, and over 50% said they skipped their first period to catch up on sleep, and 45% reported being late at least once a week because of morning drowsiness. The solution may seem simple, that these teenagers are irresponsible, they're on their phones, and they should just go to bed earlier. However, middle and high school students, as they're going through puberty, have a delayed circadian rhythm, and they feel tired two hours later than most people. And furthermore, we just can't put the responsibility on all students to fight against their national sleep schedules and addictions composed by algorithms and tech companies, especially since 57% of students I surveyed said it was work, an internship after school, sport, or other extracurricular that led them to not going to bed earlier. Students who get the recommended eight to 10 hours of sleep have trouble, who don't get under the recommended, students who get under the recommended eight to 10 hours of sleep have trouble learning, focusing, have increased anxiety, and perform worse academically. And they're also a greater risk to our schools, having increased depression and increased drowsiness when they're driving. With all this research, school system nationwide, especially those around Montgomery County, like Anna Rundle, Howard County, Fairfax County, and DC public schools have moved their start times later, with high school running more around 8:30 to 3:18, and middle school from 9:15 to 3:55. And schools are seeing an impact. Yes, Anna Rundle, Howard County, Fairfax County, Loudoun County, and DC. Students have increased attendance at these schools, and their academic performance is also increased, and there's fewer disciplinary incidents and car accidents. But MCPS recommended this 10 years ago. In 2015, then-Superintendent Starr put together a bell-timed work group, which proposed starting high school at 8:15, middle school at 7:45, and elementary school at 8:50 or 9:15. Nevertheless, students still have to wake up before dawn to catch the bus and skip their morning classes to sleep in. While some of the same concerns 10 years ago still exist regarding older parents relying on older children for childcare and delaying school buses and after-school extracurriculars, most have already been solved or have simple solutions. First, parents relying on older children for afternoon childcare have fewer concerns because of the recent investments in the blueprint for Maryland's future, which provides more access to childcare after school. Additionally, there are ways to minimize the additional cost of switching start times by reordering which school to start first, reanalyzing transportation routes, and seeing what other school systems implementing start times have already done. Finally, even if pushing start times would push back student internships and extracurriculars, seemingly having no effect, middle and high school students would be more aligned with their body's natural sleep patterns, allowing them to be more engaged in activities and feel well-rested. Of the 205 family members and 147 students I surveyed, 88% said they'd support later start times. And while this isn't the easiest issue to solve, we must start looking into later start times by introducing a new bell-timed work group and getting a more diverse set of stakeholder feedback, so students can feel well-rested and perform better academically in school. Thank you.
Thank you. So I should have started off by letting our viewers, and I like to think a million people are watching us, that we sent a survey out to all of our middle school and high schoolers, asking them what were some issues that were important to them, and what is it that they wanted the Board of Education and MCPS as a whole to know. And so, Alexander, you clearly stated very articulate, you've articulated very clearly that starting school later is very important to you, and you've done an extended amount of research, so I appreciate that. What I will say is, you are correct that there were start times that went for like 20 minutes later, right? And currently, I believe the Fiscal Management Committee had a discussion on a transportation study that was done by the school system. That has not come back to the full Board, and so we'll be able to look to here and see what was actually recommended or what came about. So I hope that you'll stay tuned to be able to hear that conversation. And I know that many of you know that we have over 110,000 students riding our buses every day, and that we do have special programs that we provide transportation to. So I do imagine that that will be something that will be also discussed in the report, to try to think about if we change or shift bell-times, what that will look like for our special programs. There are a lot of things to consider, but guess what? We want you healthy and ready to learn when you come to school. We don't want you drowsy, we don't want you sleepy, but we do also want you to think about how you find a balance in all the things that you're trying to do in your day that can also help alleviate some of that sleep that you're not getting. But definitely want you to stay tuned for that information. And so we do, I do want to acknowledge that we have staff in the audience as well. We did not know what our students were going to discuss in particular, but we just wanted to make sure that we do, we have heard some key issues from our students around safety and security. We always hear about mental health supports, and so we have quite a few people in the audience that is either prepared to come up and talk to some of what they've heard you say, if in fact you don't have information that you might need, or if there's something going on in our school system that you're not aware of. We always want to make sure that we're communicating that and that we're being transparent in the resources and supports that we provide to our students and even our families. And if there's something that you've said that we want to take back, that we'll bring that back, and we'll have another meeting to discuss what we've heard from you all and to share what changes are going to come about or how we're going to move forward. So I don't know if my colleagues wanted to address anything that they've heard from Alexander. I know that our student member of the Board, Mr. Said, has talked about later start times as well. Sammy, your thoughts?
Thank you, Ms. Evans, for your comments. And, you know, I'm probably going to have something to say in my head about all these things, but I'll try and, you know, keep it limited, but great testimony. School start times, I think, is a huge issue because when students have to wake up for school, which means how much sleep they get affects so many different other things, whether you're looking at mental health, right, whether you're looking at driving. I think a really interesting statistic, actually, that I learned recently is that when we lose that hour of sleep, when we switch our clocks every year, the amount of car crashes goes up, the amount of heart attacks goes up on that one day. I mean, a very significant amount, and something you don't think about, but sleep is huge. And so, you know, start times have been something we've been talking about for so long. You know, I really am curious to see what that comes back for with the study, because as we know, transportation, childcare is always a very big consideration when it comes to pushing start times back. There are a lot of, you know, things we have to move through, but, you know, if there is a possibility there, I am, you know, in full support of that, because I think it's something that we've needed to do for so long. As you mentioned, all these other school systems, Howard County, Anna Rundle, Fairfax, Loudoun, DC, have all already taken that step. And so it's something I'd love to see the system do as well. So thank you for your testimony.
I'm not sure what happened, but I think for the most part, we heard what you had to say. And you know what? And so I think Alexander stated correctly that when we do come back to share the information, that whatever we decide to do, we need to have a broad community engagement conversation, engage our entire community, because what we don't want to do is impose any unintended consequences on some of our families. And while some people might have secure childcare, others might not. So I think it would really be good for us to have a conversation, go out far and wide, be really creative in how we engage our community, because when we changed start times the first time, there were some community members that were a little caught off guard, right? They had to make a few adjustments. So we just wanted to make certain that we continue the conversation, that we have it, that we engage everyone. So as we put forth new ideas and actually put it into play to create policy changes that everybody has been able to share their feedback. So thank you, I appreciate that. You did a lot of research, by the way. So I'm taking it, you get very good grades, and you're great at research papers, and you're all prepared for life after high school. Just, we learn a lot from our students when they come and give testimony, so I really appreciate that. So I'm going to, I'm going to say a topic, and then if that's a topic that you have an interest in sharing with us, then I'll ask you to turn your mic on. Is there anyone that has an interest in sharing anything around safety and security? You do, okay. So turn your mic on, state your name just one more time, and say what school you're coming from, and go ahead and share your thoughts and what you want us to hear and what you think is important for us to know.
Hi, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Good afternoon. Oh, sorry, my name is Gaudi Villanor, and I'm going to be sharing about my opinions on safety and security in our schools. Good afternoon to the members of the Board of Education and avid listeners. My name is Gaudi Villanor, and I'm a junior at Northwest High School, and today I'm here to address the opioid and drug use consequences for MCPS students. Shockingly, in 2017, Maryland witnessed 2,282 deaths caused by drug and alcohol-related intoxication, according to the FY19 First Quarter Report of Montgomery County. It is disheartening to note that this marks the seventh consecutive year of rising intoxication deaths. I had the chance to interview a former student of MCPS who was suspended for using a vape stick in the school environment. A student from an MCPS school facility was seen vaping in the school bathroom by a security guard. Instead of seeing the school psychologist or even his parents having a say, they got him suspended for a week. Afterwards, he said, and I quote, "I guess it just taught me to be more careful on where I used my vape." These incidents are proof that more than what we are teaching students in health curriculum is needed. According to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, Narcan is a medicine that rapidly reverses opioid overdose. Having Narcan educational facilities in MCPS schools would be very beneficial. Members of the Board of Education, I crave the basic acknowledgement of having better reform and justice for students to be healthy and educated. If you have to provide the best environment for students to learn, I only ask that a lot of these students be handled with care. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you for that testimony. This has been a year where we've seen more abuse than I've ever heard of, have known, since I've been on the Board, and it's been eight years. And I just want you to know that it's very disturbing to us. We try to make sure that we do all we can to make sure that drugs are not coming into our school, that we're providing information in your curriculum to inform you on the dangers of drug abuse and drug use. We have a medical officer, Dr. Kapunin, who has been really great at sharing information with our community. We've held a couple of community engagement opportunities for families and students to come to get Narcan training, just to have a discussion about what we're seeing happening with our students, and how best to share information and resources and supports. So I want to ask you all a question. In the event, and any of you all can chime in, and Gari, you in particular, since it's something that you thought was so important for you to come and share with us, if you see something, do you often say something, or is there a fear or concern about snitching or telling what you all do when you see something that's happening right in your face or at your school?
I'm having a...
Can Gari go first, and Nico, we'll have you go, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I was going to say, in this situation, we did tell the administration, but the consequences of what he says was, I thought, wasn't very beneficial, because all he learned was just a better location to use his vape. So I think having rehabilitation methods, like Narcan educational systems, would be more beneficial. But to answer your question more directly, if it's someone you really care about, I think students really do want to help that student and get the help that they need.
Okay, thank you for that. Nico, what did you want to say?
Sorry about that. I was going to say, more in the sense of safety, well, obviously Narcan training is safety, and so is opioid use, but in the sense of school intrusions, things like that, I think a lot of students tend to have an aversion to saying something. I remember I testified a year back about how a student had entered Weyon High School and was walking around, and a bunch of people had recognized that they went to Sanca Valley and they didn't go to Weyon, and they were walking around endlessly, even talking to security guards, and the security guards didn't know. And I was, I asked one of my friends, like, oh, who are these random people who are walking around with their backpacks in the middle of class? And people, people just said, you know, oh, they're from Sanca Valley, like, well, aren't you worried about that, right? Isn't that a problem? And people were like, yeah, but we're not really going to say anything. I was like, well, you know, I am, I'm going to say something. But I do think there's quite the aversion to saying something, I think, especially when it comes to school safety in that sense. Obviously, if it's a bomb deck or anything like that, students will say something, but if it's more just someone walking in the school that they don't know, which could definitely be a major issue, they have an aversion to that.
Yeah, so we got to find a way to help empower our students or to get them to make certain that they're telling someone immediately, because you do not know what that student or, you know, and I'll say this, nowadays, sometimes adults look like students, so you don't know if it's an adult or if it's a student. We got to figure out a way to make certain students aren't letting, open up the doors. We want to protect you and keep you safe, and how we do that is not opening up the doors for anybody. We have those buzzers in place for a reason, for the front office to be able to let people in. So maybe we got to brainstorm how to get our students to feel more comfortable, to be able to say something to someone. My hope is that everyone has one person in the building that they trust, that they can immediately get to, to let them know that there is someone that should not be in the building, in the building. I want to, Dr. Kapunin, can I call you down? I want to, Dr. Kapunin, could I call you down just to talk a little bit about what we're doing around Narcan training? And if there is anything else that we could do to better prepare or educate students around that topic?
Absolutely. So Narcan is, I would say, the last step, right? Once someone has already been introduced to a substance, gotten to a situation where they are using dangerously and maybe has even possibly overdosed. So we focused a lot on Narcan in the beginning in terms of overdose prevention because it is so easy to use. It's very safe to use and it can literally save someone's life. We're very proud that we have high school youth ambassadors through the Be The One program who've now trained over 300 other high school students. So that is an important part, but we need to look at substance use prevention and response through a public health lens. And that means we look at everything from prevention to sort of like, what are the risk factors? How do we modify those risk factors? Why is it that kids use substances to cope? What is it about mental health and the circumstances and the availability? Can we do something about so people don't go there or they don't need to go there? They have something else to walk towards. And so a lot of that has to do with the climate of how we support each other, speaking up not just about someone's vaping, but about their mental health, understanding why we make decisions and helping each other cope in different ways. And that is something that we can teach every day from the time that you were in kindergarten. The health curriculum actually starts as early as kindergarten in terms of medication safety. We start learning about tobacco devices as early as first grade and substances, more specifics, starting from fifth grade. This year, the curriculum was updated based on changes made last year to include information about illicit fentanyl, which we hadn't had before, more information about opioid medications and safety. And, you know, we hope that that will continue to evolve as we need to know more because the drug scene is different and the risks are different now. But one thing I think we could really use your help in is we hear a lot about health curriculum. You know, there's only one year of health curriculum in high school, but you guys need the information when you need it all the time, right? So it has been really amazing to have peer educators come in and have you guys learning and teaching each other and trying to figure out all these other spaces where we have to do drug prevention and substance use mitigation and early mornings and support. So, and I don't know about you guys, but in high school, we get this push for curriculum, but also just the opportunity to engage you through a curriculum in high school is the least it is when the risk is the most. So understanding how we create this conversation and how we get to kids outside in addition to the health curriculum, I think, is really important. But for the health curriculum, we really also need to focus on kids younger and younger these days.
Sure.
So just in terms of services, so there's prevention in the healthcare, in the health curriculum. We partner with the Department of Health. So if you want the, you want to spread the word about the youth ambassador programs and being, we have youth ambassadors in middle schools now. We have at least one or two. We can bring those resources to your schools. In some of the high schools and hopefully the middle school soon, we have substance use prevention groups and kids turn out for those, like they literally, you know, 50, 100 kids at one sitting because they want to know how to talk to folks. Because it's not just about your youth, it's about your friends, right? So I think these are all things that you guys are so connected and can help us understand how to reach and support you because most kids are actually not using, right? We have a hard time engaging people to support you guys and supporting your peers and friends. Do that-
That was very helpful. And I think it also behooves us to reach out to the students that have been impacted by the drug abuse and use to be a part of the conversation because maybe they can share something that is a lot more valuable for us to know in addition to students that are bystanders watching it and wanting to have other information included in the curriculum. I'll see what my colleagues want to add. Ms. Rivera, oven, comments?
Yeah, this is, this is an area that I personally, in my advocacy for the last 30-plus years, I've been involved with the whole issue of public health and drug use and just the violence that sometimes goes in our schools and the access to firearms that is so easily. You know, we had incidents, incidents where kids can order and put a gun together and we had had homicides with those guns in our, you know, in our community in the last couple of years. So I guess, you know, part of me, I am so glad that we started the Narcan. When I, when I got sworn in, two months into my, my second month as a board member, unfortunately, one of the first things that I did was go to a funeral of a young woman at Kennedy High School who, who died from an overdose. And when I tell you that her mom did everything humanly possible to try to get her the help that she needed, she did everything humanly possible. And yet, you know, somehow we could not, you know, save her. And part of it was of the lack of support and programs that we still do not have today that we need. So I will ask you that your advocacy cannot just be with us. Your advocacy needs to reach other ears and other people who are in, in public office like us, who, who, you know, who handle a lot of our budget and so on. So your advocacy needs to go in front of the county council to ensure that those programs are being funded, to ensure that we finally have a clinic for adolescents in Montgomery County, not in Baltimore, not in DC, not in Virginia, but in Montgomery County. Because the situation is serious. We see it more and more. Sometimes they call it anxiety attacks. Sometimes they call it depression, but we know there's a lot of links to the use of fentanyl. Because, you know, there's a stigma of families that don't want people to find out that their children are using. And you heard that it takes one time to use fentanyl. It is so powerful that you get addicted from the use of one time. So the advocacy that you guys are doing, it needs to go a little bit further than, than just us. It needs to go to the state legislature so we can actually have the tools, you know, because Narcan, you can, we can bring you back, right? But then what do we do? What do we do once we bring you back? You go back to the same friends? You go back to the same environment, right? And you're going to use again. So I guess for me, it's the preventive part of, of what our doctor, our wonderful doctor was saying, right? The prevention that needs to start early on. Because by the time we use Narcan, what do we know? That we're a little bit late to the party in a sense, right? We are, we haven't been able to prevent this young person for whatever it is that they're using, whether it's because of emotional things. Because, and this is the other thing, and you guys know this, there's a lot of young adults that are selling this in our schools, right? And they have good connections in middle schools. I sit at my, at my niece's middle school. She's an eighth grader, right? So we know that's happening. So when you, when you say, you know, we need to tell, as my colleague said, to a trusting adult, it has an impact. And that impact could be that we could be saving a life. You might not know it, but that's how big that impact could be. And I think sometimes we forget the most important ingredient, there's students and the power of students. You are the ears and you are the eyes. You are the, the people that people come to you when they have an issue, whether it is with depression or whether it is with usage and so on. Sometimes they're afraid to go to their parents or to a trusting adult because of what they're gonna, the reaction's going to be. But at the end of the day, I don't want to go to another funeral. And I don't think any of you do either for your classmates. Because even in my era, we had a young person who overdosed in our school, even back then. It's a long time, okay? I'm not a dinosaur, but it was a long time ago. But, you know, the devastation till this day, thinking of what it could have been, you know, not being able to know what she could have done with her life is devastating and must be devastating to that family. So the fact that you guys can contribute to preventing that in any way, shape or form, I mean, kudos to the student who told that there was, you know, a student who had these issues and was planning to do a shooting and so on. That was a student, you guys, who was able to prevent that. It happened in my son's school in Cluxford a few years ago. It was the students who were, who went and told a trusted adult that this was going to happen. So you're, you're very powerful. You might not know it, but you are very powerful in the engagement. So please take your advocacy to other forums where there's other folks making decisions about you and your future and your education and your safety.
And so I did want to share for, for you all and also if there are people that are viewing the program to know that we do have a recovery and academic program. It's called RAP, where there are students who are in recovery and can still work towards graduation and get supports. And that was through a grant from our former governor, Larry Hogan, around the opioid operational command center. So I did want to state that. And it sounds like too, what would be really beneficial is for us to, on a regular basis, probably until we get this all under control, just out what we're hearing out in the community and just what's happening in our nation in general, is to continue to have community events where we are able to engage our community partners and have this conversation and invite all of our local and state elected officials because they do want to hear. They do want to provide additional support because we can't do this as a school system by ourselves. It will take the work and help and support of everyone. So I'll turn to Ms. Yang. Ms. Yang, did you have any comments, anything you want to share?
Yes, I actually have a question. We have seven students at the board table and three online and two in the audience. So I have a question for you by short of hand. Are you aware of any anonymously reporting tools at your school or that's at your disposal? If you do, can you raise your hand? One, two, three? I see three hands in the room of nine students and I don't see any online. And that's, that's a problem for me. You are student leaders. You are already, you know, representing the engaging student population in our school system. Yet, even at this level, that you don't have tools, you are not aware of tools that you can report things you have seen, you have heard, or anonymously. And so I identify that area we can all do better. And I, I really do feel there's a lot of work to be done. We do have the MCPS, MCPS Student Strong app. I have it on my phone. That is one way to report. We also have Maryland Safe Tip Hotlines that you can report. But hey, we need to figure out ways. We also have mental health reporting hotlines, which is on our everyone's student ID now. So we do have to, let's think about next school year, what we can do together, school system, community and students, so that these forms of reporting become like how everyone in the country knows there's an emergency call 911, right? How all of us know that, hey, there are local hospitals, this, this, this. We need to know these numbers and information, just like that second instinct. Okay. So let's together work on that. I really appreciate your partnership.
So to Ms. Yang's point, let me ask this question. You all received a survey in order to be able to respond to come here. How often do you really check your email? Or is surveys a good way to get information from you or out of you? Would you say yes or no? Are surveys a good way? Do you check your emails on a regular basis? How should we communicate really important information to you? I see a thumbs up that the survey was okay, but you all are a small percentage of the students. Nico?
I'll say personally, I check my email quite often, but I would say that for other students, that's not always the case. I always hear that students don't know about emails or anything that they get unless it's sent multiple times. So for example, this mob election, it's sent three times for them to, to see it. And even then, some students don't, don't know that it's there. But I do think that surveys are a really good way to get feedback from students.
Okay.
So I, I check my email pretty regularly, but I can use an example from last week, actually. So our eighth grade graduation is coming up, right? So they asked us to fill out a form on Google Forms through our email to get T-shirts. We had about a week to do that and our, my teacher sent the form out three times. Out of 300 students, only 150 filled it out.
Okay.
So it's for something for their own good, to get a T-shirt and vote on a design. So I really think, at least in my school, surveys were not a good way to get information.
Okay.
What about texting?
Texting would definitely work better, but I don't know how many students have signed up for the MCPS, like texting thing. And most students I know have not signed up for Remind either, so they don't get notifications that way.
I was going to, I was going to mention Remind. Okay.
Posters in school hallways, are they effective?
Um, posters, I think they're a little more effective, but usually, at least in my school, they get ripped down within five days. So-
So you have a small window.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Ella, and then Alexander?
I want to answer your second question.
Sure.
I think social media is the most effective way since it's now the norm among students. Everyone, most everyone has a phone with social media. And if you really want to reach a lot of students, social media is definitely the way to go.
Okay.
And repeatedly.
Instagram or Facebook, apparently, is no longer-
Instagram, definitely Instagram, definitely Instagram.
Go with Instagram.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ella. Alexander?
I'll touch up on kind of what Nico said about the mob election. And even though we do send out those emails multiple times, when you look at the amount of people, students who actually do vote, and I know Mrs. Cherry's in the room, so she's probably rolling her eyes, but there is still a percentage of students that don't vote. And a lot of schools actually have time dedicated for students to just go check their email and do that. And they have students that come into the classrooms to help. And still some students don't check their email, don't feel like it's important enough or that their voice won't be heard. I'll add in with Remind. My school is a pilot school with Remind. And so for us, the phone numbers, our phone numbers, when our parents register on student view or for parent view, when they do that registration, our phone numbers are actually linked to Remind. So we always are getting those text messages and we get those notifications.
Is that helpful?
I think, yeah, it's definitely, I mean, more students check their text messages than their email, especially since they're shorter snippets, just like small bytes of information. And so it might be easier for a student to do either a survey just by clicking that link there.
Okay. How many, how many of you all see, receive messages from your principals or from your school or the Sunday? Do you get Sunday calls or is that just high school? Do you get Sunday calls? And so either you or your parent or guardian listens to that message. So is that another way to maybe get information as well? Okay. Okay. So now we can see Peter and Catherine, did you all have anything that you wanted to add or say? If not, it's okay, but if, if so, I wanted to, Peter, why can't we hear you? Oh, my goodness. You know what? So let's figure out, there's a number of you, for you to call in. We've been able to see your handsome face, call in.
Oh, boy, Peter.
Right? We know who you are now.
We can get you, Peter.
And so if you want to, if you want to be, you know what? So stay on and then find the phone and that way you can call in, that way we can hear you if you want to add. Okay? So, yeah, yeah, that's why we could still include you. And then I also wanted to mention that we did not mention another way for you to be able to share information anonymously, and that's Safe Schools Maryland. And that is 1-833-M-D-B. I don't know what the B stands for. I'm just going to say Barbara and then safe, S-A-F-E.
So be safe.
Be safe, yes, be safe, yeah, BE, right? Okay, just wanted to share that. And then Ms. Patty Foot, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Yeah, so Peter, you don't have a phone number yet to reach, so if you could just keep looking at your email, we'll send you a phone number so that you can dial in. I don't see him anymore, though.
Okay. Mr. Said?
Yeah, just wanted to, to comment. Everything the student said about access to information, I think, is exactly right. I think Remind is probably going to be our best shot, but something I've noticed that was, is helpful is when we do have surveys or anything like that, tying them within class time, like when we do the mob election, it really changes when it's, oh, we'll send you an email, then you just have to see if you find it versus, let's say in an English class or something, you say, today in English class, we are going to be voting in this mob election. So I think the best way that I remember with the climate survey in my school is we had time in class. I don't know, can you guys raise your hand if you've ever had to do a survey that was, there was time in class allocated for it? And was that more effective than if they just sent it through your email? So I think if we, it's about synergy with the schools. If we can say, block out your English period just as one day to do this survey or this election, that's where you're going to get that student results. But is there, you know, I heard social media, all that, what is just the one most effective way that we want to get a survey out to you guys? And maybe we can just go around one word, like text, social media- And maybe we can just go around one word, like text, social media, and just tell us which, which way is just the most effective, just so we can get you guys here? I think we can start on this side and just go around.
I'll say text.
Text.
Instagram polls?
I would say text.
Social media.
I would also say social media.
Text.
So that I think provides a little bit of context. Social media and text is the way to go. So I think we need to move away from emails and newsletters and go towards that. And hopefully my Instagram polls have been helpful this year. I really hope that those have been useful.
For some adults.
Turn your light on, turn your light on.
Even for some adults, we prefer text because we get so much, so many emails and every day. And so, so text is very kind of directed and you look at it, you know, the moment that sometimes it comes in. So that makes, that makes a lot of sense.
So we have a lot of staff here today, staff that are in communication, in community engagement, in safety and security. So I think your feedback is important and helpful as we move forward.
Yes. And I don't know that we'll ever do away with one mode of communication because it may work for somebody else, but it's always good to add another mode or do even more in another area than what we do. So no, thank you for that information and feedback. So as I think about another topic that I think seems to resonate and we hear a lot from students, whether it's email or we're out in the community or during our board meetings, during public comments, that's mental health. So is there anyone here today that wanted to speak to mental health?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Yuna Soriano and I am a freshman at Wean High School. Today I am here to talk about one of the biggest issues students across MCPS are facing, which is the lack of mental health resources. Students across MCPS are suffering anxiety and depression due to pressure, which can be caused by schoolwork, personal life problems and many other, and many other things. But yet the school system has failed to provide us with adequate resources. Mental health is not a topic that we should put as a second choice, as it will determine our school experience, our personal life and our overall health. Especially after the pandemic, students have come to school with more mental health problems than ever before. As students, we have come back to more demanding schools, work, increased stress, and even, and even though more counselors have been hired, it is still not enough. In 2021, it was found that 42% of high school students suffer from anxiety and feel sad or hopeless. The rate of young people suffering mental health problems is concerning, but the real question is, what are we doing about it? Many times, students rely on counselors for emotional support, but counselors can be found busy talking with students about college applications and class schedules. And they lack the time and the experience to talk to students about their emotional Students need to focus, students need people that focus solely more on mental health. And many times, we lack the knowledge that our schools have psychologists and mental health days. We need to make this information available to students across all over county. Considering the fact that we are facing a mental health crisis, our county is not providing enough information to students. Students should know not only who our counselors are, but we should also know who our psychologists are and where they can be found. We should know what mental health days are and when they can appropriately be used. And even though many, many arguments have come saying that students will take advantage of mental health, I, like many other students across the county, believe that these resources are necessary and that we should expand knowledge about them. Each and every student in MCPS should feel like their mental health is taken care of in and outside the classroom. And we should have equal knowledge about resources that can be used in the middle of this mental health crisis. I, on behalf of many students in MCPS, ask you to consider adding more accessible mental health resources and expanding knowledge about the sources already available to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Yunes. I appreciate that. So we absolutely can do better at sharing the work that is happening in each of our schools and the services that we provide, not only in, at the individual school level, but just resources that the school system has that they can provide to our families and then point families and students in the direction of resources that are not provided at the school system level, like at the school level or in the district as a whole, but in our county, that is afforded to students and their families as residents in Montgomery County. So can you, so I did hear you state that you are aware of social workers and school counselors and school psychologists. I'm glad to hear that because sometimes our students don't even know that. Do you actually have them at your school? Do you know that?
To be honest, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, I wanted to, yeah, that's, that's important that you know that. Okay.
Not a really big problem.
No, okay. So we got to figure out how to make sure, certain that our students know that information because it's there, right? My colleagues and I have made certain that in every operating budget, that we are putting in there more school counselors, more social workers, more school psychologists. And when they're not put in the budget, it's because there's a shortage of them, right? And then also wanted to share that, you know, you are correct in stating that during the pandemic, that we saw the numbers really rise and increase for our students facing mental health issues or needing more support in that area. And what I will share that Montgomery County Public School System did in very, very early stages was create wellbeing teams so that there was a system, like a, a system of support at your schools that, they were there before, but I don't know that we utilized them in that way because we were seeing some of our students not coming back to school, not signing on for virtual learning for a variety of reasons, right? But we do want to make certain that you know and you're aware and you take advantage of the supports that are in your school, but also that you have agency and have the wherewithal to be able to self-regulate, right? And if you don't know how to do that, that we're teaching that and that's embedded in our curriculum for you all to know how to support yourself and what your go-tos and what your strategies, like have a toolkit to be able to use in the event that you need additional support and/or your friends, right? But also that you know who the adults are in the building. So do you all have any ideas or suggestions or recommendations around things that you don't see, that you would like to see? I see Peter, Peter has his hand up. Okay, Peter, we want to hear from you.
I tried joining on a different device.
We got you.
Okay.
Okay, we can hear you, we can hear you.
So, okay, that's great. I guess my Chromebook wasn't working, but regarding this issue, and I also want to share one comment on the last one because I didn't get to.
You can do that.
But yeah, regarding this issue, I think the problem isn't necessarily like a lack of resources because we know that MCPS has worked really hard to offer so many different resources. But the problem lies more on the fact that there's a lack of communication.
Lack of communication.
And I think, like was mentioned, not many people know who their school psychologist or social workers are. And what happens at my school is at the beginning of every year or throughout the year, admin and counselors visit classrooms and give presentations. I don't know if that's universal, but that's at my school. I think it would be helpful during those presentations to share information such as who the school psychologist is, who the, what social workers are available.
Okay.
And I think that's one way to do it. And then regarding the last testimony on Narcan, I was wondering if there was like in our health, I know we talked about how Narcan shouldn't be like the last step and, but I was wondering if there was any like Narcan training built in with, within our like 10th grade curriculum or that, the health curriculum?
I, I believe I can answer that's, is that no? There, or is a training built in? And Peter, we have Dr. Kapuna here to respond.
So as of now, the hands-on training is not built in. There's information, and you guys are closer to this than I am, about overdose, recognizing signs. We've talked a little bit, Dr. Grant and I, as to, you know, whether that is first aid versus substance use. I mean, it really should be everywhere, but the like hands-on training that you would get with our youth ambassadors is not, I think, at this time, built into the curriculum.
Okay, because this year I took health, I'm still taking health right now, and we did on, like hands-on CPR training, which is really exciting. And I was just wondering if like there could be a possibility to implement hands-on, like, yeah, well, Narcan training into that curriculum as well.
Dr. Pugh, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we could talk about how we make decisions to add.
Incorporating it.
Thank you, Peggy Pugh, Chief Academic Officer. And thank you for the question and for your patience online as you were waiting to log in. So yes, the, the health curriculum is dictated to us by what standards are in there and, and drugs are a consistent theme, K to 12, and specifically in the health curriculum. Some of the challenge is the training for the trainers of how to administer Narcan. So typically, we're using community partners who already have the training and access to the Narcan itself. So it's not that we can't do it in, embed it in that one course that every student takes. It's a matter of making a decision of, is 10th grade the time to do that? Or should we be doing that earlier on as a beginning of the year activity? And do we need it annually? So I appreciate the suggestion, though, because putting it in 10th, in health would guarantee that every student gets hands-on training.
So I know that we had that same conversation years ago with the CPR training, you know, is that, you know, is it, is it the right place to do this in high school? Because typically it was done, it was done like, you know, when, when you, on your own or when you went to college. But given the circumstances of where we are today as a community with a chronic issue of opiate use, would it be possible to train the folks who do the health, the health curriculum? Because I think the training, because I was going to do the training, it's not that intense. It's, so I'm wondering if, if that could be, because you, you still want to have adults in the building anyway, who are fully trained to be able to give the Narcan in case you do have to use it. So it kind of makes sense for that person, one of those adults, to be the person who's doing the health curriculum.
Yeah, sure. And I, and I think it is possible. I think we just would work with our partners who are currently giving the training and say, can we, instead of you training live students, can you train live staff to be trainers of? So we'll look into it.
Well, okay, so you heard that, Peter, they're looking into it.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Mr. Said?
Then, you know, one question I have for all of you around mental health and that general topic is, I know that one thing a lot of, especially our middle schools are doing, it's kind of, you know, wellness time during school. I know that each school has kind of its own name, its own system. Are you guys aware of any, you know, wellness oriented, you know, schedule time that you guys have during the day? I know we call ours Rocket Refresh. It's like a refresh day where teachers can't give new assignments. Are you guys aware of anything like that? I see, Nico, you have your mic on and anyone can feel free to just chime in. And I'll turn my mic off so you.
Then we'll get to Catherine after.
I'll, I'll say for Woo and we have an advisory every day. It's about 30 minutes and it's right after our fourth period, so it's right before lunch. They tried many different variations of it. This year, we've stuck with one where it's just that advisory period, you can go to any classroom that you want, you can get any help. If you want to just go and study, go to the library, you can do that as well, but it's unstructured time where you can get help. Teachers have to be in their class to help you. And then every Wednesday, we have a wellness day where they have wellness activities, they talk about different information, they give us surveys. So that, that's what we have on a week-to-week basis.
Very good. So we'll go to Catherine, she's on Zoom, and then we'll, Ella and Alexander.
At my school, we have this like wellness center room and they meet like during lunch. And it was new, I think, last year or the year before that. And when it was new, like they sent, there was people that were giving a lot of flyers out in the hallways to get attention for it. But now this year, I haven't really seen anything about it. So I was just kind of agreeing with what Peter was saying earlier about how sometimes we do have resources, but we just don't have the proper communication for it. Because like I said, last year when it was new, there was like a bunch of flyers about it to get people to join, but this year it's kind of just crickets.
Okay. That's good feedback.
So I had a question for them and, and Yunes with Wean High School. Are you aware of the wellness center at your school?
No.
Okay. And, and I think that's what you were talking about, the wellness center at Einstein. And we spent a lot of funding to be able to open a lot of wellness center. I think somebody here is from Nielsville. Is it you, Ms. Wanda, you're from Nielsville, right? And if it's, if it's, if it's, Nielsville is one of the schools that fits into the wellness center of either Seneca Valley or Walking Smale, right? So, and Yunes, you're, you're a freshman, right? So what, to Peter's point, which I, I really love, the fact that you have at the beginning of the year, kind of an orientation, this is what we have available to students, because you don't know what you don't know, right? And it might, and I, and it not always that you're going to be the person who's going to need those services, but gosh, wouldn't it be nice to have that information that you can share who's somebody who could use those services, right? And so you know, Yunes, this, this is a wonderful wellness center. It was one of the first ones that it was funded by the county in support with Montgomery County Public Schools. And it's a great place. It has a lot of resources because I hear you, counselors are incredibly busy. I know that my son's high school counselor, we saw her once at the beginning of the year and that was it because that's a very overwhelming job. So this is why we, we wanted to have these wellness centers. So I, I, I really, you know, and this is going to be an ask again for, for staff and and looking about our communication mechanisms, because you as a freshman, of all the people, right? You should know and have that information as an incoming student to high school. You should know the, the anonymous, you know, line. You should know about the wellness center. You should know who your psychologist is. You should know how to have access to that. And that's where we want to make sure that the information is there, because Peter's right, we have an abundance of services in this county. We have hundreds and hundreds, hundreds of nonprofits and we have quite a lot of partners that are incredible partners that do mental health. And again, you don't know what you don't know. So we hear you and we are going to be working really hard with staff to make sure that that information goes out to our students because information is power and it's also something that, you know, we hear you, that you guys want to have. So thank you for your feedback.
You all have been giving some great feedback. Let me ask this question, and I want, I don't want to assume that everybody does it or they're able to do it based on the time that we usually have it, but how many people go to back to school night? Okay, okay. So everybody, everybody's going. Okay, so you can't get the information there. So Peter did give some good information about what you're receiving at the beginning of the school year from the school counselor. And just to kind of have someone at some point deliver all that information to you all in the different ways that I've heard you all say that you can receive or you'd like to get it. Okay. So Ella and then Alexander, you all, you've had your light on.
So I actually have a couple of things to say.
Sure.
In regards to my psychologist, our psychologist's office is very inaccessible. It's behind the lockers, which we're not allowed to use. So we're not allowed to go back there unless you have a pass, which is very rare because none of us know who our psychologist is. And in regards to Mr. Said's question about wellness days, we actually have something called Nighthawk Day, which is a day where we're not, like Mr. Said said, teachers aren't allowed to sign assignments, but it's optional, so most teachers just choose to ignore it. And we have 15, 15-minute advisory every day where we're allowed to work on missing work, but it's only 15 minutes and that's not nearly enough time to finish anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander.
Yeah, I'll just share what we do at my school for wellness days to answer Mr. Said's question. So for BCC, we have bi-weekly, a Wednesday period called Wellbeing Wednesday, which is normally, could be considered basically an advisory period where we do any slides, presentations, for example, the MCPS climate survey we did in that period. So that's kind of our dedicated time. But then we also have, once a week during lunch, our college and career counselor and our school social worker team up in the counseling office. And so they have like a monthly, or sorry, a weekly lunch meeting where students can just come in if they have questions about either college or have mental health questions, they can just talk. And it kind of brings, brings the social worker into a space where students are coming for those college advice, but they're also then seeing, this is a member of my community who I can reach out for help for, and this is another support that's available to me.
Great, thank you for sharing that. And I, you know, now that you say that, I do believe some of the high schools do offer that, the ones that have the college counselor, they have it open so that, and available and. And hopefully all of our students know that too. So once again, we'll have to continue to share. So I see some lights on. We'll go with um and forgive me if I don't get your names quick enough. Carmen, yes, I got it.
So for me, at my school, the we have a lot of resources, but it's mainly that they're inaccessible as many other pe- uh people have said. Like my wellness room is the size of a large bathroom in the corner of our school. There no one is going to be using that. And usually there's like not many activities or things inside there. And I think um Ms. Evans mentioned how there's a stigma with fentanyl and how parents don't want to admit that their children are doing something like that. There's also a stigma with going to the counselors if you want to discuss your life. So no one, absolutely no one wants to tell that to any of their friends and wants to go, especially in the public's eye, to those resources. But we also have each day a twenty-minute period at the end of the day where you are able to talk with your teachers or um get missing work done. In that time period though, many students are not taking advantage of that and are on their phones and not using the wellness resources that they have.
Okay, so no, that was good information, Carmen. And Carmen, and that's and I've heard that before. But you stating that again um really raises some um issues that we have with our students possibly suffering in silence. We're not possibly, many could be doing that. And um we just have to figure out a way to be able to make that connection or provide a safe space or place for them to be able to share that somehow. So we'll 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 think about that some more, but you all have given us a lot of um good food for thought. Um Eunice?
So we in for our wellness time. We used to have a period called Renaissance right after third period. Um every Tuesday, it was forty minutes long. But after second semester, I'm sorry, after first semester, they decided to limit it. And now it's only, it only takes place once a quarter because too many students skipped. Um so during Renaissance, they kind of gave us information and they also played like mental health videos. We did surveys, all that stuff. Now we only do it um once a quarter.
Once a quarter, okay. So I'm hearing everyone say that you need it a little bit more, more often. And um yesterday we were able to attend a cluster meeting, the Watkins Mill Cluster. I was able to go around and a lot of us were able to go around and talk to either the school administration or the PTA leaders. And I did hear some good stuff going on at some of our schools where they provide moments every day or just an opportunity at some point during the school day to have um a mental break or to incorporate mental um well, mental health wellness or mindfulness opportunities throughout the school day for every single student. So it seems like we need something, a little bit more in that area. Okay.
But I would like to know, because you said a lot of students skipped, right? So you go to things that you're interested in sometimes, unfortunately, in high school, right? Because you think you know it all, but you don't. So for me, it's like, what would you like to see during that time? What is it something that would be really useful to to you? That would be concrete that you can use that information?
So maybe not information, but I think just a bit more free time to actually catch up on work. Because when we went there, it was mental health videos, but they also just dumped a bunch of like surveys on us and things that they wanted us to like do and students just didn't want to do any of that. Um but I think if they didn't do them, they would just also get pulled out of class because they had to do it like later on. So they just didn't want to do like all the surveys. So they just they would just skip and walk around the school.
Let me ask a question. So let's just say that we had not sent this survey out to ask what's important to you that you wanted to share with us? When I think about, everybody had something, well, not everybody, but for the for the for the ones who showed up today, you had something on your mind. Would you have found a way to otherwise share this with someone at school, um administration, the student leader? No? Okay, I see shaking hands. We don't have to say anything.
Uh I can just share me personally. So I am our recently elected school-wide SGA president for BCC. So obviously the platform that I have in collaborating with students to then bring things up to our administrators. But obviously I have more of an issue that is central for MCPS with start time. So I think we could increase like the knowledge of being able to either email your principal if you're having a problem and kind of saying, you know, they are there to support you. They are there to help you. So if you have an issue with something, that you should be able to reach out.
I'm trying to think. Um Carmen, you go and I'll get my thought together. Did you have a, you had your light on, yes?
So first talk about wellness days. Um our school has thirteen minutes every day, but we're not allowed to leave classroom at times to go to other teachers. It's loud in the classroom, so you can work, get work done. Um people are almost always yelling, so it's not a very mental, like rest and relaxation time, if you will.
Ironic.
It's very loud. And um what was I going to say? Forgot what I was going to say.
And thank you for sharing. Now just yesterday with um my colleagues when we were at the Cases Where Cluster, which by the way, I'm going to make a observation. I love having you here, but I don't see a lot of kids from the App County being represented um at this circle or kids even in the uh in EML or in some of, you know, some of Ocrea or some of the other programs. And yesterday um there there were, there was a share that cases or middle school, they have wellness time. But the wellness time cuts into their lunchtime. So they only have seventeen minutes to actually have lunch, which is ironic because then they go to a wellness thing, which is really not the most healthy thing for, you know, for for anybody to have lunch in seventeen minutes. You have to get in line, right? You have to get your food and just by the time you start eating, then you have to be running to a wellness time. So we need to look at things that, you know, work better for students. So having having uh the representation of a lot of students because whatever sometimes, you know, is available in Poolsville is totally different than BCC. Or what's happening in Damascus is totally, you know, different than Wooden. What's happening, you know, in in Cluxver doesn't match to the reality was happening in Payne Branch or so on. So to really have, I think, an engagement of voices, um we also need to look at the makeup of the leadership of, you know, of our student population that needs to be represented around this table. So I'm going to throw this back, you know, to you, the leaders, to make it a little bit more inclusive, to bring those voices to the table as well. Because we do have a large population of English multilingual learners. We have a large population of special education, you know, and again, going to, you know, we have these stigmas. We need to get rid of those. Because we want to make sure that every student that comes through MCPS is able to have a successful, you know, career in a sense, and they're able to feel welcome and wanted and integrated and be able then to go on and graduate successfully, right? So again, this is something that is going to be some of your work. And Sammy and I talked about it, trying to get more diversity into the SGA from a lot of those schools. Because those voices, you know, from Kennedy High School to 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 Poolsville, right? We are a huge county and each and each area has very different characteristics of needs and programs, right? That's in some parts of the county are less accessible to our student population.
And so we won't put it all on you. We, I will charge the board to, so this this committee was a start, right? It was a way to include the student voices, but it's not the only way. It can't be the only way, but this is a start and what we can do is make certain that um of all of our meetings that we have throughout the year, that we have won to have our students come and talk. But I do want to see more students. I want to um be able to, as Ms. Rivera Oven said, reach out and make certain that students up county, down county and in between are coming to talk to us. But some of that will look like us having to go to the students. It won't, I I will not think that every student will be able to come to us. The time could be an issue. Transportation could be an issue. So what we can do is make certain that we're going more out into the community, to the schools, to talk to the students, to meet you all where you're at. And sometimes it won't be a school. It could be um a community rec center or it could be um apartment complex in the in the area where we can talk. But just not making our families or our students like they have to come to us all the time. Finding ways to go out into the community, to have the conversations, to be engaging. I think it would really be great to have a state of the education, right? And have a conversation um that's focused towards our students to get that feedback, right? That's really important. As well as our community, we want our parents and um community members and families to know what's going on and how we need their help in this process. I always say, education is everybody's business. And so we need to find a way to gather and garner more voices. Ella, what did you want to add?
I just want to bounce off of what my peers have been saying about their wellness days. Our, I think they've been saying that students are the ones not interested in those, the allocated time. But I think at my school, it's it's the opposite. Teachers aren't taking this seriously. Um they choose during our advisory period to extend their lessons because we're not allowed to leave our class. They extend their lessons by fifteen minutes. So instead of having time to do our assignments, they're, we're doing their assignments, so not assignments from other classes, the ones our advisory teachers have assigned for us.
So I don't want to do this. What this is what I don't want to do. We don't want to make any assumptions about what our teachers are doing. I do know that sometimes what ends up happening is um if we've missed school days for weather or just anything, that there is a a crunch to make certain that, you know, we get everything in that we need for you all to learn and know before you move to the next level. So there is always, um I know I say it all the time, especially this past weekend, I felt like it just flew by. We all could use more time. And so I don't want to put it off on our teachers because they work really hard to ensure that, you know, they're providing the instruction that you need to go to the next level. But it could be a conversation that we have with our teachers, with our ed, with our administrators from from the board level, all the way, all the way down to you as students. I would love for you all to be so empowered. This is what I can't believe. I can't believe that you had the nerve and the courage to come here and talk to us and share with us, but you don't have the courage to share that with someone directly in your school who impacts that work every single day. We're absolutely going to share all that information with them. But the whole point is for you all to have the agency, to take the initiative, to be in charge of your education and to share with us what you want to see, what you don't see. So this was a great start. This was perfect, actually. Coming to us was great. But I want you to feel that same way in talking to the people in the building. Because guess what? They're they're not scary or they shouldn't be. And they want to know. They want to know what they could do different. And so maybe what we'll be able to share with them is as um they're having the conversations about the work that's going to come down the pike, how can they continue to include and infuse the student voice in the work? So that when they're going through the process of creating opportunities around mental health and wellness days, then when they do all that planning and that work, that you all appreciate and you show up and you're active and you're engaged. And what I hear from, what I've heard from all of you all is it's not something that you're interested in. And sometimes we don't know that. We just need to ask the consumer, what is it that you want to see? And you are the people that we're servicing, our students. So I'm looking at everybody, but I'm not trying to point the finger at anybody. But I'm just saying, you all did great by coming today, but I want you all to take it a step further. I want you to share that information, that feedback with your teachers. There's got to be somebody, one person in the building that you can share your ideas with and they could take it back to the administration if you don't feel comfortable with. Yep, but use your student leaders. So Alexandra is at BCC. There aren't any other BCC students here. But if they're listening, Alexandra, make sure you get your message out far and wide and say, I'm the go-to. Come talk to me. Let me know what you want to share. And if you don't feel comfortable with sharing it, I'll bring that information forward, right? And then lean on your um adult leaders that are in the the building, whether they're involved in the in Del Bay CP. We have various Latin groups in the building. We have PTA. I don't want to make the assumption that PTA is the only direction and place you should go. But there are a lot of different organizations that are coming in your building. And they're there to make certain that um everything is working as it should for you all. Okay? All right. So we have Nico. Nico, I'm going to go ahead to you and then we're going to go to our next topic, which is academics.
I just want to answer, sorry, answer a previous question about having, how how to increase visibility of your school psychiatrists, of um your social worker. And I'll say, my school has done, especially recently, a pretty good job with that in light of um, and of course, it came at unfortunate time in light of our shooting threat that happened a couple of weeks ago. But what happened was they had our school psychologist and our social worker go to every single English classroom that day and have a meaningful conversation with the students. And I think if we could emulate that at every other school, you know, maybe at the start of the year and at the start of the second semester, we could really increase knowledge about who those people are. I personally hadn't met my school psychologist before that. And when she came in my room and had that full-on conversation with us, I felt that I was heard. I think everyone else in the classroom felt that they were heard. There was a lot of questions that obviously they couldn't answer, but they were there for us. And I think that's so important.
Very good. Catherine, did I ever miss you? I thought I saw your head up a while ago. I don't know if I called on you. Did you ever get to say anything you want to say? Okay, all right. And then um Britta, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Peter, everybody on in the virtual on Zoom? Okay, all right. So let's um transition to academics. Who came here to share information with us regarding your academic experience? Okay, so we'll go with Carmen first. Nico, you and then Peter. Okay, so we'll go with Carmen, Peter, and then I mean Carmen, Nico, and then Peter.
And Ella.
And then Ella. All right. Ella, I'm going to leave you out. Go ahead, Carmen.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Carmen Saxana and I'm an eighth grade student at North Bethesda Middle School. I'm here to talk about the lack of education regarding Judaism, Islam and the Arab world. I am deeply thankful for the brief overviews of the topics such as the Holocaust and the Islamic Golden Age. Yet there is vast gaps in these teachings. I completely understand that religion is a hard subject to teach in public education, especially in lower grades. But it's necessary to provide some exposure to these different topics. In these times, students must have some understanding of the history of places that are in conflict, such as the Middle East. Just scanning the news shows conflicts regarding educational facilities and how they fail to approach such topics. A Muslim friend of mine stated how people make cruel jokes about his religion and country of origin in school and the pain that can emerge from the ignorance. In order to bring communities together and create peace, understanding is needed. And education must bring that exposure and understanding. Due to current events, it is vital that students be taught history and have said history applied to the world to see multiple perspectives. The social studies curriculum must be revised to not represent only the students of MCPS, but the world around us. The revisions that I suggest will be similar to the ones made previously in the elementary uh schools regarding diverse curriculums. The education students receive in the present is shaping the type of world we have in the future. Let's actually teach the hard history of the world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I I will let everybody speak and then we'll respond to what we've heard. Um Nico.
Hi, everyone. So I'm here to actually speak on the experiences of EML students in my school. Um I recently was able to meet with them. My Spanish teacher has a group of Spanish-speaking students that she brings together every lunch to create community within that group. Um just because there's not that many other places to create community for those students. And I was able to speak with these students as part of a separate extracurricular of mine. And I I heard some concerning things that were happening. I heard that students weren't being allowed to use um resources to be able to translate certain materials that weren't exams so that they could understand it better. I um I also heard that students at my school weren't, um that the teachers there weren't being understanding of the fact that these students might need a little bit extra help to understand materials that are in English for these emergent multilingual learners. Of course, you know, English might not be their first language, but that doesn't mean that they don't understand the topic. It just means they might need a little bit extra help with that. And from what I was hearing from these students was that the teachers didn't quite understand that. And even when the students would try to support one another, share ideas during a time when it wasn't an exam, they weren't being permitted to do so, despite the fact that their email plans say that, of course, that they that they can. And MCPS regulation and policy says that they can as well. I also had the chance to speak with students at Einstein and Richard Montgomery and many different schools through our countywide SGA. And I heard that at schools with more email populations than, say, Wigan, which has a smaller population, they do have more resources such as this. They feel that they have a lot more teachers that they can fight, that they can confide in with these sort of situations. Which I really want to bring that to light and show that, you know, a lot of our schools are doing it right, but other schools have a lot to improve on, I'd say. You know, for the schools with smaller email populations, I think it's so important for our academics that we place that focus on them and that we really show our teachers that these students matter, that we're a collective community working to bring them up, bring them to the the same expectations as everyone else because they know just as much as everyone. They're just as smart as every other student in this room, as every other student in the county. the county, and they deserve that chance as well. So, I reached this point and to bring that up and show that we should provide those teachers training, and we should provide our EML students more support as well.
Absolutely. So, thank you both. So, I think we'll break it up. And Nikhil, I haven't forgotten about you. I'm going to get to you. Okay? So, let's break it up so that we're not going too far ahead of ourselves. So, I'll just go back to Carmen. Thank you for that beautifully stated, and I absolutely agree. And so, we're working on that. I know this summer, we will have some training that all the employees in the Board of Ed will have to go through. Right? We have heard and seen a lot in our school system, and I do think that it's important that as we are teaching and educating our students, that there's a way that we provide the history to help our students to be more empathetic and respectful of our differences, because clearly there are differences between all of us, whether it's religious, religion, or gender, ethnicity, all of that. And as you all move forward and leave our school system, you'll encounter even more differences out in the community. And we want you to be able to be informed citizens that are respectful and that you are just aware that everyone's lived experience is different, but you can learn and benefit from that as well. So, it is important that we incorporate the history of everyone, whether it's our, whether it's around Jewish, our Jewish students and antisemitism, whether it's around our Muslim students and Islamophobia. We have racism that is existing for African-American and Black students, for our Asian students, and Latino. Absolutely, I wasn't going to forget. So, just la di da di and everybody. I just make sure I include everybody, that there is a way that we can ensure that, starting at a younger age, but also making it fit, be age-appropriate, that there's a way for us to incorporate that. And I, I don't know why her name's escaping me. Ms. Tracy Oliver-Gary has been great in terms of the work that she's been doing in the area of social studies, ensuring that we're implementing and doing more work. And there are going to be opportunities where we're going to have to reach out to our partners, because there might be chances where we need more information, and we're going to rely on our community partners to help us with this work going forward. I don't know if Dr. Pew wants to come up and talk a little bit about some of what we're doing, what's going to happen, what's coming down the pike, but we're doing a lot of things. Yes?
Thank you so much. I was so glad to hear you share, you know, the idea that everyone be represented in history and in the curriculum, and it is a controversial piece right now. But I think our job as a school system is to make sure that we're providing access to information, right? Where students can make up their own minds, have their own thoughts. And it is just based on primary source documents, things that happened in history. So, we're excited about the opportunity to do some of the revision in fourth and fifth grade curriculum that you referenced. But I think an enhancement that might help our community and our kids and our students and our families feel better is that, you know, some of this is hard. Some of this is really hard to talk about and, and stay neutral and stay balanced, given where we are in our own community and what's happening in the world. So, Tracy Oliver-Gary has created a unit about teaching hard history, right? And that is what we referenced about the summer training, because we think we need to make sure that our teachers are prepared to handle the passion and the conversations in a respectful way, and how to be able to elevate factual information and honor people's perspectives, because that's really what it is about, is that there, there are facts in history that happen to people, antisemitism and anti-Islamophobia, excuse me, it's late. And then there's information that's available to share perspectives from both sides, or from multiple sides, depending on the issue and what's happening nationally. It's also part of the curriculum that current events are elevated in, in your social studies classes, tying whatever the concepts are, because social studies really is a set of standards. It's not a set of content and a set of topics that you cover. It's a set of standards where students leave with the skills and knowledge and information to have their own opinions and be able to articulate those. So, each time that there is a topic for the day, or a subject, or an area in your, in your classes, there can be connections made to what's happening in the world, based upon what it is that you're, you're studying in your course. So, we're excited about the changes in the new history content standards. There's a new framework that actually opened up some of these topics as areas to be discussed, religion included, which previously hadn't been part of the curriculum. But we're trying to do it carefully, sensitively, and making sure our, our staff are prepared to be able to engage in good conversations. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't want to forget our LGBTQ plus community as well. And so, my omission of stating that out loud was not intentional. I was thinking of them, but I wanted to say it out loud, so that our students and staff know that we're inclusive in all that we do, and we're trying to make certain that we do this work in an equitable way. So, Ms. Rivera-Evans, did you have any thoughts? Or was it more towards Nico?
I wanted, well, actually, both. I just wanted to say that we are, you are part of the, one of the most diverse schools, system, and jurisdiction in the country, right? We have areas like the city of Gaisersburg, which is the most diverse city in the country. Germantown is top three of the most diverse places to live in the country, right? It's a quadrant. We speak over, over 156 languages in Montgomery County Public Schools, right? So, we are a very, that is, to me, is one of our strengths. But I also know that, you know, we still have some inequities that we need to look into and make sure that we are representative of the students that we are teaching and that they're in our classrooms every day. So, I know that is something that, as Dr. Pew said, that we're working on, right? And to Nico, I just want to say thank you so much for, for taking the time and the empathy of going and talking to, to students. Back in the day, they were, you know, they were called ESOL students. I'm a former ESOL student. And I know what it feels to feel, to feel kind of a little bit left out and kind of you just, you know, a little bit lost, right? Because you're learning a new language, you're adapting to a new place, never seen a snow before, so you're just like an odder everything. And, and then you have to, you know, learn a new language. And going to, to your point about learning about other cultures, people used to, when I was in, in elementary school and middle school, they thought that, you know, I would love tacos. I didn't know what a taco was, because, you know, I'm Latina, but I'm from Bolivia. We don't, we don't have tacos. We don't have tortillas, right? But everybody just assumed, because you're Spanish, you know, you must like tacos, right? And so, I know that seems like a small thing, right? But it resonates as somebody sometimes, and you, you know, that's, so it's part of also of us, you know, kind of sharing who we are with others and welcoming others, you know, who, who do not think like you, who do not speak like you. My best friend was from Taiwan when I was in elementary school and middle school, and we still keep in touch. And so, it's, but it's that beauty of Montgomery County, right? But it makes me truly worrisome and sad to hear the students who are in our system feel somehow left out, and they feel that they're not being supported by our staff. That does concern me, and it's something that I hope Dr. Pew is going to take that to her team, because it's already hard enough to adapt to a new place, to learn a new language, and it's even harder if the people that you count, which are the adults, right? If they're not being supportive, it's a problem for me. And like you said, there are some schools, like Gaisersburg High School, has the largest ESOL population, the largest special education, the largest Mets population than any other high school. So, they, they kind of have that training and that knowledge for years, right? But that was not the case. That's my alma mater, you know? I was one of four students Latinos who graduated in my class, right? So, everything kind of has to evolve. So, for those schools that have a very small population, we really need to focus and do a little bit better with the training and the TLC, because probably this is the only place that these students kind of feel some kind of connection. And the last thing we want to do with any young person is to kill any hope that they're, that, you know, that they're valued, and to also the empathy that goes into that. Because, and this probably some of you know, if you're first generation, right? It's, it's so nice to remember the people who, who were there for you, for your parents, to kind of support you and help you. And it's so easy to just be nice. You know what is hard? Not to be nice. You actually have to go out of your way not to be nice, right? So, a simple smile, a simple thing that you can do with students who are just coming here. We have quite a number of refugees from Afghanistan that are going to be coming up, you know, who came in elementary school a couple of years ago, and now they're going to be in middle school and high school, to make them feel welcome. That is the Montgomery County way. That is the Montgomery County that I grew up in, that I felt, that I felt safe and loved. I know that sounds kind of corny, but it's so important to young people who have been through trauma and have been through turmoil, and who have seen things that you, some of you will probably never even can imagine you will see. So, if I could just leave you with that, and Nico, thank you so much. We're going to take a lot of your suggestions into account, and I know Dr. Pew is going to do her best to work with her team. So, and we started some training last summer, specifically so they could have the training on how to deal with the, with the ESOL EML population, right? Across the board, not just the teachers, you know, who work with that population, but the whole building, in a sense. And I think we're going to be doing some similar work. So, thank you.
You know, but come, come to the table, and that way you can use the microphone. I'm going to do a time check.
There you go.
It's, it's 2:36, and we do, we still have a couple of people to get through, but this is great. I love it. Introduce yourself. Introduce yourself and say what's cool.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Tahira. I go to Robert Frost. I'm in eighth grade. I just wanted to share some words regarding, what's your name? Cameron? Come, come, come on?
Yeah.
Regarding Judaism and Islam, there's a minority scholars. It, it talked about it briefly in its like curriculum, but most of their facts were false. So, if we could implement more like research into these things, that'd be great. And to Nico, and was it? EML and ESOL are the same.
It is. ESOL is the old term. EML is now.
Yeah, I only knew ESOL. But if with EML, I think autism people also should get a voice. They are like the same, like they are not getting the support they need that can help them, and I feel like they deserve a voice just as much as all of us.
Thank you for saying that. I really appreciate it. It takes a lot of courage to do what you just did, by the way. So, kudos to you. And you're only in middle school, so I expect to see you here for the next five years, four years. I just want to say the special education folks, and, and I'm, and I'm going to tell you and all of you, so you know the growth in special education, it's actually the growth of EML and special education. So, then you're dealing with a population that is dealing with two things. They're dealing with being special ed, and they're dealing with being ESOL or EML, right? So, that is something that we're actually, and it's, and it's, and it's a major growth. It's not like a little growth. It's a major growth, right? So, I really appreciate you bringing that to the table, because it is a population that we are looking into being more supportive and making sure that they have what they need to be able to, to learn, and again, to feel welcome in our system.
Okay. So, we'll have Ms. Yang, and then I see Catherine with her hand up, and then we'll go to the other two students that want to talk about academics, Ella and Peter. Ms. Yang?
Yes. Thank you to the students for bringing up curriculum as an important tool to not only prepare us for skills that is academic, but skills in navigating our society, better understand each other. So, this year, not only like MCPS is doing work in our curriculum, state legislation is also taking a look at curriculum, and they have bills on antisemitism education or AAPI curriculum. And I was looking at some of their data as they study what's in our curriculum, right? Over the state, not just MCPS, across, maybe. And so, just take AAPI, because that's one of the bills there. The data says just 5% of content topics in our middle school US history framework has mentioned AAPI at all. 5%. That's it. That's it. And in high school, the percentage is higher. However, however, 71% of those topics in high school curriculum mention AAPI in the context of war and conflict. Okay? So, what does that mean? Content that cast a negative light on the AAPI while ignoring other aspect of their history. So, you are the perpetual foreigner. We are always at war with you, or, or you are at war with someone else, right? That is the content is mentioned. I take this as an example to say, for a lot of our groups, there are a lot of intersections, right? Our Black, Brown, LGBTQ, many Jewish students, people believe in the Islamic faith. So, many, many groups have intersections of, that our curriculum needs to do better and, and, and represent, first of all, facts, research-based facts, accurate facts, and allow people have different viewpoints and highlight different aspects of their experiences. So, I think I, I brought this up to say that there is a lot of work to be done, but I think we have taken the first step, acknowledging, acknowledging the, there is a need, and our students already tell us there's a need, and we have taken the step to say, what are some universal things that we can start training our teachers on? So, thank you for, for your feedback on this topic, and I, I really look forward to see, to hear other students.
Absolutely. Yes. Before we go to Peter, Catherine, did you have a question or something you want to respond to that you heard?
I just had a comment, because I resonate very strongly with Nico's point, because I myself am Latina, but I have like the privilege to be raised and born in the US, and my first language is English. But at my school, Albert Einstein, there's a lot of Latinos who immigrated from their home country to the US, and I just feel like my reality versus their reality is very polarizing. There's just not a lot of resources, and a lot of them struggle in classes. And I've been asked multiple times to translate things for them, and I mean, I do it with pleasure, because I support my community, but I know that there's not always somebody that can translate for them in every class. And at the same time, I'm a student. I'm not really a teacher, so I feel like they're missing out on a lot of things and learning, because they're not able to fully understand. And there's just not a big percentage of Latinos going to college, and I know that a lot of these Latinos are just trying to graduate, and they're just going to enter the workforce right after high school, and there's not necessarily something wrong with that. But at the same time, I don't think that they're receiving the proper, just resources to advance and go to higher education.
Thank you, Catherine. So, this time, I want to be respectful of everyone's time. I don't know who has to get where, but let's, let's go to Peter. And thank you for your comments, Catherine. Thank you for the comments from Carmen and from Nico. So, Peter, I, I know you're here to share your thoughts on academics. Can we share the full screen or at least? TV if we can?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Great. Go, Peter.
Okay.
You've been so patient. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for giving students the opportunity to speak today on a variety of topics. My name is Peter Boyko. I'm a sophomore at Northwest High School. And today, I would like to talk about how we can better prepare our students for And today, I would like to talk about how we can better prepare our students for college and career readiness through course offerings and programs, including adding a possible financial literacy, graduation requirement for high school students, and expanding certain IB and pathway programs across the school system. The background behind my comments comes from two different places. One, continuing an initiative that was started by Hannah Olunia, former SMOB, where she formally proposed a resolution on financial literacy. And then two, this past, this school year, Will Jawando, a council member, actually came to my school for a school visit, and many student leaders came to talk to him. And at this, I guess, visit, many students raised concerns about college and career readiness, and this is just something I want to bring up to you all. So first, I want to talk about financial literacy. Based on the path I'm headed, I would leave high school with minimal education on how to be financially successful. Budgeting, stocks, debit versus credit, and taxes are topics that I'm not familiar with, but need to know. And financial literacy is a very important subject. Not every student will need to know, let's say, how to dissect a frog, or how to find the vertex of a quadratic function, but every student will need to know how to manage their money in the future. And I would propose maybe piloting a financial literacy semester-long course at a high school, and collecting feedback from those students to figure out next steps, and maybe even working with the Maryland State Department of Education to not only implement a graduation requirement here in MCPS, but statewide. I know we all know the data, which is that students who have access to a high-quality financial education have better financial outcomes as adults that result in less debt and higher quality of life. The next thing I want to talk about is expanding IP and pathway programs to reach more students. Springbrook junior Jill Parento recently testified to the Board of Education regarding this exact issue. She mentioned how only eight high schools have the IB program, one high school offers the global ecology program, one the Capestone program, and I could go on and on. Students should not be forced to either change zip codes or travel long distances to access these programs. And programs such as the global ecology program at Poolsville, and pathways such as the medical pathway at Paint Branch are wonderful opportunities for students to build interests, to build on their interests, and see themselves in a future career. And I think providing students with different possibilities is what can truly help MCPS live up to our motto of college and career readiness. And then one last thing I want to also mention, that kind of goes hand in hand with today's event, is excused, I know this isn't really academics, but excused absences for civic engagement. I was looking at policy JEA-RA, which is the student attendance policy, and I noticed that there wasn't like the possibility for a student to be excused due to civic engagement. And I think MCPS should maybe modify that policy. And I know this event, for example, students are excused from, but I think, but like events such as protests, or walkouts, or testifying is not. And since our county is really close to DC, which is a center full of political activity, I think we should be encouraging our students to engage civically by allowing three excused absences per school year. And that's pretty much all my comments. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak, and I look forward to seeing, hopefully, something change, whether that be with financial literacy, programs and pathways for excused absences for civic engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Ms. Yang, did you?
Yes. Hi, Peter. You touch upon quite a number of topics. On the topic of financial literacy, I'm with you. Eight counties in Maryland has it as a mandatory for all high school students, right? As a graduation requirement. But we are making strides in that area, in our school system. We have a personal finance courses. We have also included that in the math course. We have an online module, and there is a resolution that passed this Board of Education to create a multi-language online module for financial literacy. So we are on the same page, completely. You brought up an interesting concept of excuse absence for civic engagement. Never heard of that before. This gave me something to think about. So thank you for your input.
Thank you. So now we will hear from Ella.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the chance to, you know, speak today. Again, my name is Ella Wan, and I'm a seventh grader at Neillsville Middle School. I'm here today to talk about the integration of environmental education and sustainability initiatives in MCPS. I'm convinced that our students not only deserve an education that prepares them academically, but also instills in them a profound sense of responsibility towards our planet and its future. MCPS is not just a collection of classrooms. It's a laboratory for learning about our local environment, which boasts a rich tapestry of urban, suburban, and rural landscapes. Our curriculum should reflect this diversity by incorporating Montgomery County-specific examples and case studies, from the impact of urban development on local watersheds to the vital role of agricultural conservation in preserving our precious agricultural reserve. But passion alone is not enough. Action is essential. That's why I urge MCPS to lead by example by promoting energy conservation and sustainability practices. Let's harness the power of the sun with solar panels on our school roofs, implement energy-saving technologies, and embrace waste reduction initiatives like composting and school gardens. By doing so, we not only reduce our carbon footprint, but also inspire our students to become environmental leaders in their own right. Integrating environmental education into our curriculum, providing outdoor learning experiences, and supporting sustainability efforts are not just educational imperatives, they are moral obligations. Our students deserve nothing less than an education that equips them to be informed, responsible inhabitants of our planet. Let's seize this opportunity to shape the environmental leaders of tomorrow right here in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ella. And so at this time, Ms. Cherry has come to the table. If you could, I heard Peter comment on civic engagement. Is there anything that you wanted to share?
Certainly. So good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shella Cherry. I proudly serve as the Director of Student Leadership and Extracurricular Activities for the School District. So it gives me a great pleasure to be able to respond to some of the things today, in particular because it is coming from students. Peter, I appreciate you bringing up and elevating that key point. It was, I believe, in the era of Ananya Tadakonda, a former student member of the Board, who brought that up as a potential, was a resolution and potential exploration by the Board of Education and the School District, to be able to encourage, as you stated, students to participate in civic engagement, but also create balance between the academic need and requirement for students to be in the classroom to be able to excel. To be very honest, and I just turned 50, and I admitted that publicly in front of everybody here, but to elevate that point, just to say, I don't recall all the great specifics of its finality, but I can definitely research that and get back to you and share with you kind of the breadth of the research and the resolution at that current time, where it fell in the history of the Board of Education.
Yes, and I should have that policy in my head. I can't remember if it was KGB, or I don't know why I want to say that. But there was a resolution that Ms. Tadakonda had brought forward, and I think it was around trying to get three excused absences. And so at that time, and you know what, in the conversation that we're having right now around absenteeism, I think the issue for some of my colleagues at the time, so I'll just say myself, included, was how we could be able to monitor when the students were going to actually take off, and getting parent support, and getting that permission, and just thinking about where our absentee numbers were at that time, saying that three days were the amount of time that we were going to allow for students to take off. So it kind of stagnated for a little bit, trying to kind of come to an agreement on the number of days that we would all be in agreement with. At the time, I think what I recall is that it was three days, and so we thought about that system-wide, what that could do. It was just, it gave us a little bit of pause, and so we kind of set it aside for a minute to really think about how we could do that work in a way that would work out for all of our students, right? But we definitely want you to be civically engaged, so we'll have the conversation. But thank you, Ms. Cherry, for coming to the table. And thank you, Peter, for providing that question and coming today. And I just want to say, if there's somebody on Zoom that needs to leave, please feel free to go ahead and jump off if you need to, but we do thank you for coming today and for your input that you had, that you added to the conversation. So don't be afraid to go, and we're at 2:55, but we have not forgotten about Nikhil. So I didn't know if there were any other questions or comments from what we heard, but I just wanted to make sure that Nikhil was able to provide comments to us as well in his area. So tell us what your area is about, and remind everybody what school you went to.
Today, I'm going to be talking about school infrastructure, especially in the DCC. Sorry, I have really bad allergies. My name is Nikhil Rao, and I am an eighth grader at Eastern Middle School. And today, I'd like to discuss the pressing infrastructure issues affecting my school, Eastern Middle School, and our county. In the three years I have attended Eastern Middle School, my classmates and I have witnessed and been impacted by many severe infrastructure troubles. Firstly, my school has faced six suspected gas leaks in just three years. We have been forced to be outside in close to freezing temperatures, I think it was down to 40 one day, without time to bring a jacket or a sweatshirt for over two hours while the fire trucks came and everything. And furthermore, like most unrenovated MCPS schools, my school has faced varying room temperatures from desert hot to arctic, depending, like rooms neighboring to each other. And just two weeks ago, actually, our air conditioning stopped working, and it was 80-degree temperatures with really high humidity, and we were doing state testing at the time. So it was a really uncomfortable environment to be tested. And we've also had ceilings dripping with water, ceiling tiles falling out, we've seen mold on our ceiling tiles, so. And an uncomfortable learning environment doesn't lead to very good learning. Schools like mine in the DCC are frequently underfunded, and a lack of care for our school's infrastructure creates an uncomfortable learning environment that impedes our learning. Eastern's renovation was recently postponed to after 2028, and that means four more classes of students will have to experience this uncomfortable learning environment. I request the Board to look into expediting renovations for both Eastern schools in the DCC and the county in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. I don't believe we have any more, and if my colleagues have comments they want to state, that would be great. So I'll just get back to Ella. You are absolutely right. We want to make sure that we're taking care of the environment, being sustainability, being sustainable and being friendly with the environment. So we do have composting at some of our schools. We try to make sure as we're building new schools that we're thinking of ways to save energy, so that is definitely something that is on the top of our minds. And I think many of you saw Ms. Harris earlier. She is always pushing to ensure that we're leaving a great footprint behind, right? So I heard that. And Nikhil, thank you for your comments. We know that many of our schools need to be attended to, and so in our recent CIP budget, we made certain that HVAC was high on our list to make certain that those renovations get taken care of around heating and air. We've been to Eastern Middle School, so we definitely know that you need a new middle school, it's a high priority for us. In the meantime, we've tried to do some things, like your bathrooms look a whole, whole lot better, right? We've done some painting and various other things at your schools. So we are in the process of doing a boundary study in the Down County, so we are very much aware that, you know what, this is a school system that people are moving to Montgomery County to go to. We are in some areas bursting at the seams, and so we can't build our way out of it. But we do know that there are repairs and renovations and modernizations that we need to do. We make certain that we not only let our local elected officials know that, but at the state level, they are aware of that. I myself, as a former Board President, has been before the state to testify on the Bill to Learn Act, to make sure that we get the funding that we need for our projects here in Montgomery County. So we'll continue to do that, but thank you for reminding us of how it impacts you every day, right? And I will turn to my colleagues. I'll turn to Mr., well, Ms. Rivera Oven had her light on first, and then Mr. Said.
Very quickly, I just want to say thank you again for your advocacy, to all of you, to, you know, to our Zoom friends, and you guys who came here today. But again, I'm going to encourage you to take this advocacy, not just with us, but especially with infrastructure. That kind of advocacy should also go to the county council, because as you know, and the county executive, that's how we get the funding. That's how it trickles down to us, and then we're able to put it into the schools. So it is important that you do that kind of engagement, and you guys are great ambassadors to take that message. You're very eloquent, and you're very to the point. To Ella, I just want to say, I did something even better. I actually, my son graduated from Claxton High School, and he went into environmental policy. He graduates tomorrow, and he's eager to come back and do some work with MCPS schools to kind of make it more universal, everything that we do with composting and so on. So it took 12 years, okay? And then another four years, but you know, he's there. So I know that this is something that is very near and dear to our young people, because I know the urgency, right? That this is going to have an effect, not just on you, but on your children and your grandchildren. And I know sometimes we don't think about it that way, but this is something, one of the top priorities that we have. And I want to say to Catherine, I just want to say thank you, Catherine, you know, for also being so eloquent, but also for the advocacy that you did, specifically for those young people that are trying to do the best they can with what they have, and to be able, you know, to have a better life. And it pains me to hear in 2024, that at a school like Einstein, which is, has such a large minority, especially Latino population, that we still are struggling to support our students. Because honestly, if we cannot support kids in this situation, you know, at Einstein, it really concerns me as a parent, as a member of this community, as somebody who graduated, you know, from Gaysworth High School, and as a board member. And, you know, it's, time is of essence, and we don't want to turn anybody off not to go to school or not to graduate. And this is why it is so essential also, like you said, you know, not every, and also not every kid wants to go to college, right? They want to learn a trade, they want to open their own business and so on, and we need to have those pathways open for all and support them, and get away from the stigma of, oh, my gosh, you know, you're not going to college, you're a loser, kind of thing, right? That's not the case. I know so many of my colleagues, classmates from high school, who have very successful businesses and are doing incredibly well as adults and as parents, and that's what we want for every student that goes through our system. So thank you so much for supporting, for the empathy, and for recognizing how important that kind of activism is. Nico, we're going to miss you. We wish you all the best, you old man. And also, you know, and also to Sammy, right? Because I think this is your last committee meeting with us? Or do you have? Yeah, committee meeting. And it has been incredible to have you as a colleague, and just in this committee, you have done so much. And I know that, you know, you're leaving a lot of incredible leaders behind you to be able to speak up and to say what is needed, not just for their own, you know, little topic, but you guys are speaking for others, and that's what true leadership and activism is. So thank you, muchas gracias, and wish you the best, and wish you the best, Sammy.
Mr. Said?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Rivera Oven, for reminding me that the end is near. Just kidding. But one thing I can say is the system is in great hands, because we have all of you. And genuinely, you guys are some of the strongest student leaders across the country. And I'm going to say that again. Strongest student leaders across the country. Whenever I speak about, you know, MCPS, you know, we have a lot of state conferences, the thing I always say is that Montgomery County Public Schools has some of the strongest student leaders that I've ever seen, that I've ever come across. And you guys being here today to speak to the Board of Education on your time, to talk about issues that matter to you, is a demonstration of that. And I've noted down everything you guys have said, and, you know, I wanted to make a couple comments. I, you know, waited till now to... I, you know, waited till now to, to be brief here. But one thing in talking about, you know, looking at diverse courses, which I know is a, is a big, you know, thing that I've encountered. I've had courses that, you know, I, I think definitely needed more research, for sure. But what's interesting is students can actually lead the process in creating new courses, new pilot courses at their schools. And it's something that every year the Board of Education approves new courses. And this year, I saw a number of them. I think one of them was Muslim Global Experiences that, you know, come to the board table that we approve. And, you know, I don't know if you want to walk us through the process of what that looks like because students don't know. But you guys can actually create a new curriculum in collaboration with central office and a teacher. So do you want to walk through that process?
No, I won't walk through the entire process.
Yeah.
It'll take another half hour. But the idea is, is that there is a very well-spelled-out process to create a course with the content, make the proposal at your school, run a school pilot for a year, get the feedback, do the study on it, and then the Board can choose to adopt it after your first full pilot year. And so there's that. And then, once other schools have done pilots of courses like that, like the Global Ecology, there has to be a determination of whether or not another school would like to adopt that program. Because usually, they're developed for the single school, but we have expanded courses that were developed at a single school because of interest in other schools. So check out your course program of studies that shows what's available at all schools to see if there is a course that you're interested in. Thanks, Sam.
Of course. I, I always mention that because something no one knows that I didn't know until this year, you guys can literally help make new courses for your school and for MCPS. So, you know, don't be afraid. Reach out to a teacher, walk through the process, see what you'd be interested in, and, and, you know, continue to be leaders in your education. But again, thank you guys so much for being here today. I wish we could have a board meeting like this every week or, you know, every, you know, every board meeting we have, where we just have students and we just kind of talk to students, what's on your mind, what's going on? You know, this is an incredibly valuable conversation. All these recommendations have been substantive, and I think they all are very impactful to a diverse audience. And I really appreciate you guys bringing them to our attention. So thank you all again. Thank you for being here on your own time and talking to the Board of Education and talking to us. And all your input has been very valuable. And I'm happy to see so many faces here today. Thank you guys so much.
Oh, yes, this was great. Thank you, Ms. Rivera, Evan, for acknowledging Nico, who's leaving. She's been a great leader, as well as Mr. Said. We would definitely miss you both. And I think this shows us how much is, how important it is to include our students' voices and that we need to really go out to hear from more of our students, right? And to see and hear from them and know what their experiences are.
Thank you to Ms. Cherry.
Yes, I was going to get to that. I was gonna, I was gonna thank everybody. I was gonna thank Dr. Pew and Dr. Kapunin, as well as Ms. Middleton Murphy. We have Ms. Fisher in the audience, as well as Ms. Lopez, and of course, Ms. Cherry. Ms. Esafora Andrews had to leave, but we just wanted to have people on hand that are doing this work day in and day out